Good afternoon. It's Wednesday, April 5th, 2023. This is a school board workshop and the time is 12:01. Board, Board Vice Chair Samuel Fisher will not be joining us at today's workshop. Today on the agenda, we have Speak Up, Listen Up, an agenda, and the Agenda Review of April 11th, 2023 Regular Agenda. We will begin with Speak Up, Listen Up. Attorney Bruno, would you please introduce the presenters?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have two presenters who are joining us by Zoom. Mr. Craig Leopard and Jason Lundey from CentriO. And we'll go ahead and get them up and they will begin with them introducing themselves a little bit further and moving forward with the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, everybody. Appreciate you all presenting to your work meeting today. Hope this is being delightful, educational, and informative. My name is Craig Leopard. I'm a Senior Account Executive with CentriO. And I work with companies to help them improve their ethics and compliance programs with different organizations. Also on the call with us today is Jason Lundey. Jason, you want to say hello?
Hello, my name is Jason Lundey. I'm the Chief Learning Officer at CentriO. And I've been in the ethics and compliance field for working with businesses and other organizations for some 35 years. I'm glad to be here.
All right, what we have on the agenda today is to kind of go through some of our training products to provide some information and resources for you. And really with a focus on trying to help develop the Speak Up, Listen Up culture within the Lee County Schools. So we're going to go through some videos. It's really designed to be interactive, so it's audience participation. Normally, these videos are done one-on-one, meaning the student or the employee or staff member would take this course and answer the questions and do those sort of things. But with this environment, we'll do a group environment, so I'll ask for sort of a consensus on some of the questions and answers on the quizzes. And then I'll, I'll kind of drive on my end to advance the videos and that sort of thing. So you'll get a flavor for that. If you have any questions or anything, feel free to interject. One thing I want to kind of mention on these videos is there's five of them. Three of them are rather short, two of them are a little bit longer with exercises included. The first two videos are really designed for the employees. So it's from their perspective and kind of as employee of speaking up and that sort of thing. The third and fourth one are really more towards managers and from a perspective of managing different issues and listening from a Listen Up perspective. So just wanted to give you that in mind. Also wanted to kind of outline that these training courses are geared towards a wide variety of audiences, at different skill levels, different, different groups of people, so different audiences. So some of this may seem sort of lower level, but it's really designed to be kind of interactive, engaging, and keep the employees and the people that are taking the courses involved in interacting with the material. So we'll go ahead and proceed with that. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Jason, do you want to make any comments before I'm getting this up?
I just want to go through the one slide that talks about the value of a Speak Up and Listen Up program as a start, so people have an appreciation both at the board level as well as leadership and management throughout the organization of what, what benefits this provides an organization.
Let me, let me pull that up real quick here.
Sure. Now, we have a number of points based on our experience in working with businesses and all other types of organizations of what value this really provides the organization at many different levels, the board level, leadership, managers, employees, and potentially other stakeholders that might be involved in a Speak Up, Listen Up program.
All right, everybody able to see my screen? It looks like it's coming through.
We're not able to see it, Craig.
All right.
There we go.
There we go.
As you can see, we have quite a number of things that we've learned over the many years about Speak Up and Listen Up programs. And when we say Speak Up, Listen Up, we obviously mean how employees at all levels in the organization and potentially other stakeholders might speak up about concerns or suspected misconduct. And then Listen Up is about how those people who are receiving that concern or receiving that complaint know how to respond to it, know how to talk with that individual. So those are the components. And it really starts with leadership being able to learn about the risks that are occurring within the organization, within the institution. The sooner you learn about those risks, the sooner you can take action on them, especially when they're at a lower level or at a smaller stage. Number two is how it empowers employees throughout the organization to help identify risks. They're the ones who are at the front lines, they're the ones dealing with all the constituents of the organization on a daily basis. And so they're really oftentimes the best people to identify those risks and bring them forward. Three is the issue that if you don't identify these risks early on when they're small, then they're going to mushroom, they're going to grow, they're going to metastasize, and they're going to become much bigger and a bigger problem for the organization once it eventually gets identified. Four is just the, the fact that there are internal costs when you have to deal with risks, especially bigger risks. There are the downtime of the employee, the time that the manager spends in dealing with the risks, the investigators, leadership, anybody who's involved in this. It could be a hard cost that has financial implications, or it could be a softer cost to the organization in terms of, of just people not doing the work that you really want them focused on doing. Five is the issue of going really to culture and morale. Employees who feel like they've been harmed, if they don't have an opportunity to speak up, then you're going to have issues about morale, their engagement in the organization, their loyalty to the organization. When you do have these programs, then people feel like they're being treated respectfully and being treated fairly. And that really goes to the issue of a strong culture of the organization because people are more engaged in that concept. Six is to the degree that a Speak Up program rolls out to other stakeholders, or they have an opportunity through the organization to have a voice in problems that are occurring within the organization, it's going to create a greater sense of goodwill. The medical industry has learned this in really profound ways where by finding that if, when they can apologize about possible errors, they find that actually costs go down, both settlement costs and lawsuits, or even the opportunity for lawsuits have gone down. So it's a very fascinating, ironic situation that occurs. Number seven is the fact that there's a stronger defense to the organization if there's a plaintiff lawsuit, if they can demonstrate that they actually have a strong internal control system, that they are, are finding ways to, to have these issues raised earlier, the problems raised earlier in the organization, the leadership, where they can take action. Number eight is related to that. In, in the corporate world, there are certain responsibilities that boards and leadership have to making sure that they've implemented a proper control system. And I think this is being carried out in much more types of organizations throughout the, throughout the country. So that becomes a benefit that the, the board and leadership find that they're demonstrating more responsibility regarding the, the governance of the organization. So it really goes to good governance practices. Nine is simply the issue that you're identifying and mitigating risk, and that's being built into the practices of the organization. Problems are always going to occur, the more that there is a program in place or, or policies and practices where people know that they have responsibility to help mitigate the risk because it's always going to occur, the sooner you do it, the better you're going to get the result. Ten is just the idea of creating a communication culture where people feel like leadership wants to hear from them about problems, misconduct, concerns, and it creates that, that four-way communication program that works much more effectively in the organization. And then 12 is just the idea that you're building in early risk management as a, a regular part of the way that the organization is managed. Organizations that run into big risks understand that the, the time that the board or leadership has to spend and is consumed with dealing with those risks and taking their eye off the ball of what they really want to focus on on a day-to-day basis really creates, you know, significant problems. Organizations that have those systems in place find that by mitigating risk early on, by having these systems in place, that they're going to be better at, at focusing on the things that they really want to focus on. So just a quick overview of benefits of the program.
Thank you, Jason. That's, that's, that's good news. That's good, good information to provide. Give me a second here. I thought I had all these lined up ready to go. There, 21 seconds. This is, uh, just the music in the background, just some light reading. It's a very short, uh, video. All right, so it says, "I am familiar with all of the channels of raising concerns and how to use them." So generally speaking, as a board, do you feel that you're familiar with how to raise issues and, and how to use them? How would you, how would you rate that? We'll go one through five, five being strongly agreed and one strongly disagree. Can you guys hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any kind of consensus from the room? Do you think you have the information and the ability to report things and do you know where to go? Or you need some help with that?
Ms. Jordan?
Are, are you speaking on us as board members? Do we know where to go if we have concerns?
Yes.
Yes, that's the superintendent. Sorry.
Our policy is to move things to the superintendent and then he will distribute it to the correct department heads. So that's, it's tough being the board, but that's how it works here.
Yeah, okay. No, very good. I appreciate that. So generally speaking, you guys feel confident in, in your skills to effectively raise concerns?
I believe we're, we're confident.
Okay. It says, "My manager is effective in encouraging our team to speak up about concerns, to listen to their concerns, and responding appropriately." I guess this is going to go more to the staff. Do you feel like as a board, your staff members actively been encouraging Speak Up culture? Or do you think that that stuff needs improvement?
Not dealing with the staff directly. It's a little tough for us to say that. I think almost every organization could use improvement, though. So we're trying to, you know, we want to set by doing it ourselves here and to make it a district-wide culture.
Yeah, and that's great. That's, that's really the goal.
Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chair, I, I couldn't agree with you more. I think the aspect of what you're doing as a board, effectively leading this process, is incredibly important to this organization. So I think it depends on, in this particular question, how you define your manager. So when you think about your manager, two of them are seated over here on the right-hand side of the dais. I think Kathy and I are proponents of this. We will champion this cause, we'll bring it forward. I have a meeting this afternoon with our learning opportunities, with our professional development head, as well as members of the, the, the learning that's sort of required of our people, but we're also expanding beyond just the requirements to consistently encourage people into this process. I think, if we're going to be really honest with each other, I think, I think some of your concerns exist beyond Kathy and I. Do, when we assign stuff to be investigated or looked into, I, I've had individual conversations with all of you that sometimes there's some concern about how well do maybe second and third-tier managers, how do they follow up? So I just wanted to be clear for the consultants, you know, that you've expressed that to me and I just thought it would be, I just wanted to chime in a little bit, apologize if it's not appropriate.
No, thank you. Absolutely. That's what we're looking for. And it's, you know, to, the whole idea is to create a discussion and conversation around this topic. So that's, that's good information. I appreciate you sharing that. Obviously, the idea is to encourage the staff members and the different people to speak up and report things, but on the other end of that spectrum is, is Listen Up. And that, that really impacts the culture, is kind of completing that cycle of somebody reporting something and then how it's responded to and followed up on, investigated and communicated back to the, to the staff members as well. So all of those things are important. And I think that investigation process is a very important component to that culture, creating that culture and making it feels like when somebody does speak up, it's important and it's relevant and it, it matters, you know, that they're not doing it for a lost cause. So I appreciate you sharing that. Uh, this is another one, says, "I'm comfortable with sharing my ideas, ways to improve our work." I'm just going to kind of bypass this one, I think. Uh, so it's the number five, this is the last one on this segment. "I am comfortable with speaking up about concerns, questionable conduct, and suspected conduct in our organization." I think that's the goal, that you want staff members and, and everybody on the, in the organization to feel like they're comfortable, they can speak up. The number one issue is the fear of retaliation, that something's going to happen if they do speak up. They're going to get fired, removed, demoted, you know, reputational type situation where there's some reputational risk for that individual for, for coming forward to report something. So obviously, the goal is to create an environment where people are comfortable speaking up and there's no fear of retaliation. All right, so we're on to the next one.
Thank you, I do. I am, I'm sorry, when I'm reading all this, this is great that you're showing it to us. I think we're the wrong people for you to be, to sharing the pulse of, because this should be going to the schools to get the pulse, because we really can't speak on how the, the staff at Franklin Park believes that, or how they feel, or any of our other schools. So for you to ask us these questions, I think it's, it's very difficult for us to, to speak on their behalf, because we're not in that, we're not living that every day as they are.
That's, that's a fair observation. As I mentioned at the beginning, these first two courses are more designed for the employees or staff members, they're not really for managers, so they're probably not going to relate as much to you directly. But I think it does help kind of create that conversation of what do the different facilities or locations think? What's, what's the attitude? What's the culture that exists? Are we fighting an uphill battle or we kind of have a transparent environment where things are communicated freely and people are comfortable both reporting and following up and, and listening to different stakeholders? So you bring up a good point.
Attorney Bruno?
And as...
Before you proceed, take a moment to review the feature.
Was there something else there?
Yes.
I was just going to say, as Dr. Bernier indicated, we're in the process of reviewing some of our mandatory learning, and this will be incorporated as part of the Speak Up. So it is going to filter all the way throughout the organization so we can get a really good pulse from our staff in terms of how they feel. But it starts here with the leadership, and that's why we're sharing this with you today.
Yeah, I would, if I could, Mr. Chair, I think there's a duality to this. One is to ask you some of the same questions that our employees will be asked. So if you can see this also as an opportunity for you to weigh in as to whether this would provide some of the right questions that we would then ask of our employees in the same style of survey, are we getting to the meat of the matter regarding, starting to create a Speak Up, Listen Up culture?
Ms. Kevanelli?
And I don't know if this is the right time, but I, I think it's important, it's not just to speak up regarding bullying, it's someone to be able to speak up and, and say how they feel without retaliation, regardless of it being, uh, maybe a little negative, but really they're just saying, this is how I feel, I feel like you left, you left me out, you didn't ask me to, in my opinion, you know, it's just about respect. And we have a situation right now in our own, on our own board, right here, where our two secretaries feel like they were left out of a decision regarding the closet. And they're, and they're, and they've actually been already reprimanded for it, and I'm going to say they, I don't know that both have been, but my point is, they weren't included in the conversation. They want a seat at the table and without retaliation. So I think it's important that we listen to how they feel and, because they're the ones that's going to be moving everything out of the closet and probably somewhere else. So I think it's just about respecting those that will be affected. How's that?
Good example, they should be listened to. I think we can move on. I think much of what's been said will be covered as we progress on through this, so...
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Our organization's success depends on each of us identifying serious problems before they grow and potentially damage our business and reputation. Small problems can become larger and more costly unless they're identified and fixed. In a Speak Up culture, everyone is empowered to ask questions and raise concerns so we can prevent problems before they happen. Each of us has a responsibility to speak up if we see something that isn't right. What's your role in fostering a Speak Up culture to strengthen and protect our organization?
I've watched Vanessa violate our organization's policy by sharing her passwords with coworkers. The policy is really clear. We're not supposed to share our password with anyone. At first, it seemed like a small problem when she told Deshaun how to log into her laptop when she took a break, but then she gave her password to Amber when Amber forgot her own. No one said anything, and Vanessa keeps doing this. I recently overheard her share her network password during a phone call with her husband. I know I should tell someone about this, but I haven't yet. How can I feel confident that this issue will be taken seriously if I raise it? And more importantly, that someone will actually do something about it? What if I raise a concern and nothing happens? What if I get in trouble after reporting it? I know that talking to someone is the right thing to do, but actually making the decision to report it, now that's a little harder. What should I do now?
Select the statements you think are correct, then select Submit.
So I need some input here. We got some options here. Exercise, Speak Up Workplace. Did somebody have a question?
We were just saying to bring the volume up a little bit, please?
Okay. I can do it on my end, I'm not sure it'll come through, but I've got it turned up a little bit more.
You're good now, Craig. Thank you.
Yep. So tell me which ones I should check here. Typically, organizations, over 50% of employees witness misconduct annually. Do you think that's a correct statement? Most businesses, most businesses make available only a hotline for how employees can raise concerns. Do you think generally speaking, that's a true statement?
No.
No? Okay. And typically, in organizations, less than half the employees report misconduct that they observe.
True.
And you should speak up if you learn that someone falsified a credentialed twin business.
Yes.
Most people at work have witnessed misconduct, but many of these violations go unreported. Maybe they think it's not their business, or they don't want to get someone in trouble. But these statistics reinforce the importance of promoting a Speak Up culture when raising concerns is expected and welcomed because it solves problems that, if unaddressed, can harm others and the business.
Just to make a comment here on that one, most businesses make available hotlines for, to raise concerns. Typically, a lot of organizations use it for critical issues or really... Typically, a lot of organizations use it for critical issues or really important issues. We do have some, a lot of organizations that are starting to use the hotlines and reporting to report different categories, things that are beyond HR related type issues. So, you can use the hotline any way you want, it's not limited to just one type of HR issue or bullying, retaliation or that side of the thing, you can open up to different type of issue types, you know, even less significant type things that you have. They have a voice and they have a way to report it and you have a way to kind of listen and kind of hear what's going on within the system.
Fostering a workplace where everyone feels comfortable and confident in raising concerns offers tremendous value for our organization. This culture is founded on valuing open communication. Select each panel to learn more. It's everyone's responsibility. In a speak up culture, everyone is comfortable delivering bad news, even if it involves a manager. Working is one. Open communications align all of our efforts across the organization so everyone is working together toward the same goals. Handling problems. A speak up culture helps us identify concerns that could prevent us from achieving our goals. When we raise problems early, we can resolve them before they become larger problems. Meeting commitments. A speak up culture increases the likelihood that we will meet our promises and commitments to our organization's many stakeholders. Preventing violations. A speak up culture helps us resolve problems that might otherwise become violations of our organization's code, policies, the law, or regulations. Open communications. When we can discuss problems with confidence, we are encouraged to speak up regarding something that's illegal or inconsistent with our policies. You have several ways to raise concerns, starting with this one. If you are not comfortable or successful with one option, try another option. Select each image to explore. Don't wait. When we can discuss problems with confidence, we are encouraged to speak up. Raise your concern timely and do not let challenges to speaking up prevent you. You also may wish to review our organization's code and policies regarding ways to speak up about concerns. Have a discussion. If the questionable conduct is minor and you are comfortable doing so, talk to the individual engaging in the conduct if you think this individual is open to a discussion. Let's review other options you can use to speak up. Use the option you feel the most comfortable with. Talk to your manager. Part of your manager's job is to listen to and understand your concern and how it relates to your work. Contact another trusted manager or leader. If your manager is not available, or if your concern is about your manager, talk with a manager you trust. Use other options. Other designated resources for speaking up include the following. Please review. Cheryl's manager instructs her to make some inaccurate entries into the department's financial records because he forgot to add some expenses during the last reporting period. What options does Cheryl have? Select all that apply.
Wait, you're going to make that the first one? Should I, check that one or leave it?
No.
Okay. Second one, assume someone else will report it when things go wrong?
No.
No? Discuss her concern with her manager that altering the records isn't consistent with the organization's policy.
Yes.
Very good. Seek guidance from another trusted manager.
Yes.
And report her concern anonymously.
That's, yes.
Yes.
Cheryl knows that she cannot falsify records even if her manager requests this. She has several ways to respond and not act improperly. If Cheryl thinks her manager would be open to feedback, she should explain that the manager's instructions don't follow policy. Otherwise, she should seek guidance from another manager or designated resource as indicated in our organization's policy. But making a false entry in business records is not a legitimate option. Review what you can expect when you raise a concern about questionable conduct. While some individuals with concerns do not come forward out of anxiety or fear, understand that retaliation against these individuals is strictly prohibited. We all have a duty to preserve our speak up culture. Select each photo to explore. Retaliation. No manager may take a negative employment action against someone for raising a concern or providing information regarding improper conduct. Retaliation includes, among other actions, demotions, pay decrease, and poor performance Our non-retaliation policy. Our organization will not tolerate retaliation against anyone for raising a concern in good faith. This means that anyone who raises an honest concern is protected, even if the concern turns out to be mistaken. We also will not tolerate retaliation against anyone who provides honest information regarding a possible violation. Also, no one should harass or bully an individual who speaks up. Reporting retaliation or bullying. Don't stand by if you witness retaliation or bullying. If you suspect this conduct against you or someone else, raise your concern to your manager or a designated resource in our organization.
I observe Vanessa violating our data security policy. I calmly tell her, while it's great she wants to get work done, it's wrong to share her passwords with other people. I explain the damage it could cause to our organization and customers. Vanessa says she won't do it again, but a few days later, I hear her sharing her password with AJ because she wants to leave early but needs him to download some customer files after she leaves. Should I say something to Vanessa? If I do, is she likely to hear my concern? My next step is raising my concerns with our manager, Helena. But I know that Helena is impressed with Vanessa's work ethic. Helena often talks about Vanessa's terrific results. Will Helena listen to my concerns objectively? How can I best speak up so Helena understands my concerns?
If you are unsure about a concern or the concern seems minor, sometimes you can resolve it by talking with the person involved. Select each photo to explore ways to address a concern with a coworker. Clarify the situation. Ask the individual about their conduct so that you better understand it. Perhaps what you observe is not a concern after all. Review examples of what you might say. Offer a reminder regarding values and standards. If you're more certain that the conduct is questionable, here are some examples to review of what you could say. Raise a concern. If the conduct is clearly a problem, let the individual know that you are concerned, but recognize the conduct may be unintentional. Please review some examples of what you might say. From what you just learned, select the best option to respond to the following situations.
A coworker could be taking the organization's office supplies for personal use, but maybe not. What do you think is the best option here? Clarify the situation, offer a reminder, raise the concern.
Clarify.
Clarify.
A coworker tells a joke to you and others find slightly offensive. Think, clarify the situation, offer a reminder, raise the concern.
I would phrase it, I would say offer a reminder.
Yeah, I'd go for a reminder first.
For a reminder.
Next one, a coworker forgets to follow up, follow a minor email protection policy. Clarify, reminder, or raise a concern.
Reminder. Because of forget. Clarify.
Reminder. Clarify.
Reminder, right? Say forgot.
Yeah, I'd say reminder.
A coworker clearly accepts a very expensive gift from a vendor that is outside of our policy.
Raise the concern.
Very good.
If the urgency or seriousness of your concern warrants, you need to speak up immediately. Select each photo to explore some options to start the process. Schedule time. Unless the misconduct requires immediate action, it's best to set up a meeting with your manager or with whomever you want to raise the concern. Doing this will reinforce the seriousness of the discussion and ensure the resource can focus on your issue without distractions. When time is short, if you cannot wait to schedule a meeting, raising a concern quickly, even if with less information, is essential to alert the right individuals. If time allows, it is useful to prepare before raising a concern. This can help your manager or designated resource to better understand the concern and its implications. However, if you don't have time or the resources, raise your concern anyway. Select each photo to explore some options to start the process. Provide facts. Provide facts about what you know. For instance, who did what, when, where, and how? The more details you can provide, the more quickly the situation can be addressed. Know the standards. Discuss how the conduct relates to our organization's values and principles, standards, policies, and other rules. Consider the consequences. Suggest possible consequences due to the behavior. How, if left unaddressed, the misconduct could harm others and our organization, including its reputation. Be ready to help. Assist in any investigation as instructed, but you must not investigate the situation on your own. Let's take a look at a situation Sahil finds himself in. For the third time, Sahil sees his coworker, Risa, taking laptop computers from the locked supply room to her car. When he asks Risa about this, she tells him, mind your own business. He plans to talk to his manager. What should he tell his manager?
So we've got, A, it looks like Risa is helping us get rid of some extra laptop computers, or should he say, Risa is stealing laptops and you should immediately start an investigation? Or C, I wanted to let you know I just called the police because Risa is taking advantage of us? Or D, I saw Risa taking several laptops from the supply room to her car and I wanted to make sure you knew about this.
D.
You don't have to speak to the individual engaged in the questionable conduct if you don't feel comfortable doing so. You can handle a concern in other ways. If one option is not available or ineffective, try another. Talk to your manager. Your manager is responsible for helping you address any concerns of questionable or improper behavior. Talk to another manager. Other managers are responsible for helping with concerns of improper behavior if your manager is not available or the concern involves your manager. Consult other resources. Contact another resource within our organization identified in our code or policy. Other designated resources for speaking up include the following. How you raise a concern is important. Which would be good steps you can take when speaking up? Select all that apply.
So, tell me which ones I should check here. Describe the conduct you observed?
Yes.
Provide only an abbreviated version of what you've seen or heard, the details aren't important?
No.
No, good. Persuade your manager or another authority to assign you to investigate the misconduct?
No.
Focus on the misconduct, not the individuals or the personalities.
Yes.
Yes.
Explain what you may not, explain that you may not have all the facts.
Yes.
Yes.
And do not request or insist on a specific outcome.
Yes.
Yes.
If you suspect misconduct or a violation of our policies or the law, speaking up is always the right choice, even if it makes you uncomfortable. Select yes or no for whether you should raise a concern.
So you don't have all the facts, should you report that, raise the concern?
Yes.
Yes.
You're not sure what you saw, should you report to raise the concern?
Yes. No. If you're concerned and you're not sure.
I'm saying no.
Yes.
Wrong?
Yeah.
You're busy with another task, should you raise the concern?
Yes.
Yes.
The person conducting the questionable conduct is well liked.
Yes. Yes.
And you believe you witnessed something that wasn't right, but there's a chance you might be wrong. Should you raise the concern?
Yes.
Yes.
I want the audience participation.
People make mistakes, often with the best of intentions. Sometimes, though, they do things that violate our policies and frankly, common sense, given the negative effects their misconduct can cause. As a manager, it's never easy dealing with misconduct. But as I stress to my team, if someone witnesses or knows about questionable conduct, I want to know about it. I need to create an environment where my team feels safe to speak up. Andrew, who's on my team, asks if I have time to meet with him. He says he has a concern regarding a coworker's behavior. How should I make sure our meeting is successful? I need to handle this correctly. My actions will affect Andrew's and other employees' confidence in coming to me in the future. What can I do to best support Andrew? How can I create an open dialogue?
Speaking up or raising concerns is critical for our organization's success. A speak up culture is created in a workplace that values open communication. Select each photo from left to right to learn about how we create a speak up environment. Psychological safety. In this type of workplace, it's safe to discuss difficult issues and problems. All employees, especially managers, recognize that speaking up is just part of problem solving. Open communications. If we expect people to confidently raise questions or concerns, that means we as managers need to value open communications. This enables individuals to speak up about misconduct so that we can address it. Solving problems before they become big ones is in our best interest. Working together. In an open communications workplace, employees feel their opinions are valued, even if opinions may differ. Managers welcome information, including bad news. Employees do not fear retaliation for speaking up. It's everyone's responsibility. Employees are comfortable constructively discussing difficult topics, including with their managers. Employees feel it is their responsibility to raise different viewpoints, issues, and No matter what the issue is, everyone should feel safe to ask questions and raise concerns. Select each photo to explore your important role as a manager to encourage a speak up Model appropriate behavior. Your staff looks to you as the voice of the organization. How you respond when your team raises difficult issues will impact your work environment. Do you encourage others to speak up, or do you discourage a speak up culture by how you react when staff raise questions? Encourage communication. Encourage an open exchange of ideas to help create a safe environment. Next, help your staff get Next, help your staff get comfortable with raising difficult issues. Show your team how to appropriately discuss difficult topics. Listen up. Listen to your staff and show them that you care. You encourage their willingness to raise concerns when you listen. If a team member raises an ethics or compliance concern, listen thoughtfully and carefully. Don't argue or debate. Instead, demonstrate that you hear the concern and want to fully understand it. Then determine how the concern should be addressed. Select each photo to review how Helena might respond to Andrew's concerns. Poor response. Asks somewhat accusatory questions. Interrupts Andrew while he's speaking. Fails to empathize with Andrew. Please review the following exercise. Select the best approach that Helena should take with Andrew.
All right, so what's the best answer here? Uh, A, I only have a few minutes. Andrew, for starters, um, are you sure your concern is legitimate? Or B, Andrew, thank you for coming to me with your concern. I'm sure it's not easy and I'm here to listen and learn. Please take your time, let me know how I can help. Or C, Andrew, please take a seat, tell me what's on your mind. I only have a few minutes, though. Or D, Andrew, please take a seat, tell me what's on your mind. Let's see if we can work out a solution to your problem.
I think B's the best.
I like D. I'll still answer. I say D.
How do you best handle concerns others raise with you? Select each panel in order to explore this challenge. Responsibly receive someone's concern. Focus exclusively on the conversation. Don't answer your phone or email or allow other interruptions. Let the individual know you are interested in hearing the concerns. Listen carefully. Don't let note-taking stop you from focusing your attention on the person. Remain objective. Don't let negative prior incidents involving the individual cloud your judgment. And, ask clarifying questions so you clearly understand the concern. Your response matters. Assure the individual that raising concerns helps our organization learn about and handle problems. Let the individual know about the confidentiality of the report according to our code or policy. Explain our organization's non-retaliation policy and that the person should let you know of any suspected retaliation. And, discuss possible next steps as outlined in our policy. Additional guidance. Keep the conversation going by asking open-ended questions. Review some examples of what you might ask. What not to say. Avoid saying anything that sounds defensive or accusatory. Review some examples of what not to say. Body language. Remember the influence of non-verbal communication. Keep your body relaxed. Don't cross your arms. Lean forward. Maintain eye contact. And use verbal and non-verbal cues to show you're listening. As a manager, it's important that you address concerns someone raises with you. Select each photo to explore more. Keeping the individual informed. Inform the individual of your next steps, such as talking to other resources and leadership, seeking guidance or recommending an investigation, and the duty of confidentiality according to our policy. A factual review may be required. Following your discussion about the concern, consult our code and policies to help determine if an investigation is warranted. Contact designated resources for guidance about how to proceed. If you fail to take proper steps to handle an individual's concerns, what could be a likely outcome? Select yes or no for each example.
So if we don't do the right thing or address the individual's concerns, uh, the first one, yes or no, the person who raised the concern may lose trust in you?
Yes.
Uh, you may expose the individual and others to possible retaliation?
Yes.
Uh, you're not monitoring responsible behavior?
Yes.
Uh, you're not allowing improper situations to continue?
You may be allowing, yeah, yes.
The person who raised the concern may assume that you're effectively addressing the matter.
May assume, yes.
Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, you may expose your organization to legal liability.
Yes.
And you may violate your policy and the law at the same time.
Yes.
After someone raises a concern, we as managers have an ongoing obligation to foster a speak-up culture. Select each photo to explore this duty. Encourage reporting. Continue to reassure your entire team that speaking up is always the right thing to do. Think of additional ways to show that you are personally grateful when staff share their concerns with you. Be discreet. Maintain discretion regarding the individual's report and keep information confidential to the extent possible. Get guidance from an internal resource about how to handle the situation and what you can and cannot share. Prevent retaliation and bullying. Never retaliate against someone for raising a concern or providing information in an investigation. Monitor your team members are not bullying someone for having taken these actions. If you see any indication of bullying, follow up with our resources as soon as possible.
Having witnessed what I consider improper behavior by a coworker, I asked my manager Helena to meet privately. I was nervous about what might happen to me for speaking up.
I saw that raising a concern was not easy for Andrew. I thanked him for coming forward. I promised to listen objectively and assured him that I would follow up appropriately. Overall, I felt I'd handled the situation well.
Helena was really open and respectful. She said she was glad that I spoke up about it, but I don't know if she understood my anxiety about being punished for speaking up.
I couldn't let Andrew go without letting him know, I know it took courage to raise concerns. Good thing he did speak up. Still, he looked anxious as we finished our conversation. I can only imagine he will be worried about possible retaliation.
Remember the courage required for someone to raise a concern? It's not unusual for people to worry about possible retaliation. As managers, we have a special role to prevent retaliation and preserve a speak-up culture so people won't regret raising a concern. Select each panel to explore this important topic. Why non-retaliation matters. Many ethical, legal, and financial reasons exist for preventing retaliation. Retaliation toward anyone for raising a concern violates our policies and is contrary to our values as an organization. Not only is retaliation wrong and often illegal, it discourages others from raising concerns. This means problems don't get identified and resolved. Retaliation. Retaliation occurs when an employer adversely affects the job conditions of an individual for raising a concern or participating in an investigation. Examples of retaliation by a manager could include a poor performance review, disciplinary action, a demotion in title, denial of a raise or bonus, and directing others to ignore this individual. Bullying. You also need to monitor your team because employees can harass or bully someone who raises a concern. Examples include playing pranks on or ignoring the individual, excluding the individual from work or social events, and calling the individual negative names because they raised a concern. Perceived retaliation. Someone who raised a concern may perceive possible retaliation or bullying, even if it does not occur. As a manager, be mindful that this person is sensitive to how they are being treated. Look for private opportunities to affirm that this individual acted properly in speaking up. Regarding an individual who raises a concern about misconduct, review each action and choose what type of conduct it represents.
So we've got options of possible retaliation, bullying, or possibly either one. So the first one is a manager directs the person who raised a concern and everyone else on the team to put in extra hours to complete a project on schedule. Think that's possible retaliation, possible bullying, or possibly either?
Retaliation.
Retaliation.
Okay.
Oh, no, it's possible neither because it's everybody. Sorry.
Yep, no.
Good catch.
Yeah, one player screws up.
Yeah.
Yep. Coworkers call the person who, uh, raised the concern off hurtful name. Yep. Got it. A manager reduces the pay of the person who raised the concern without a good explanation.
A retaliation.
Retaliation.
After someone raises a concern about hers, her team's harassing conduct, she has stopped talking to her.
Retaliation. I think you had that in the video.
Yeah.
I think you had that.
Ah, don't talk.
He's as an example. I mean, it's kind of both. Can't we have a both?
The last one, a supervisor unexpectedly assigns an employee with extra work shift after his report of the supervisor's misuse of work time.
Retaliation. Yeah. Retaliation.
Our organization is committed to a retaliation-free workplace for individuals who raise concerns about questionable conduct and who provide information related to the concern. Also, in many situations, laws protect staff from retaliation, and our organization is committed to abiding by these rules. Anyone who suspects retaliation against any individual for raising a concern should speak up and report it. When you need to make an employment-related decision involving someone who raised or helped to resolve a concern, take steps to avoid actual or perceived retaliation. Select each image to learn more. Evaluation questions. Consider these questions to avoid actual or perceived retaliation.
Does my intended employment action fit with our organization's guidelines? Uh, is the employee being evaluated for conduct that was tolerated before this person reported a concern? Uh, have I documented the individual's work and conduct to support my intended actions? Uh, would an unbiased observer agree that the proposed employment action is reasonable? And the last one is, have I considered that the stress and anxiety from raising a concern could affect someone's performance?
Seeking guidance. Consider discussing this matter with your own manager or another internal resource before making an employment decision that involves someone who raised a concern or assisted in an investigation of it. As a manager, you are responsible for supporting our organization's commitment to non-retaliation through the following actions. Select each photo to explore them. Communicate expectations. Let your team know that our organization does not tolerate retaliation against anyone who honestly raises a concern or helps to resolve that concern. Monitor your team's activities. Watch your team's interactions for signs of bullying that target anyone who raised a concern or helped to resolve it. Seek and address questions and concerns. Assist anyone who raises a concern about retaliation or bullying. Be aware that someone who has raised a concern will remain on high alert, so be sensitive and reinforce the message that our organization appreciates those who speak up. Use recognition and corrective measures. Work with internal resources to hold individuals who engage in retaliation or bullying accountable as we don't tolerate these actions. Use resources in leading others. Work with other leaders and resources to address instances of suspected retaliation so that our organization can stand behind its commitment to a non-retaliation workplace. Set a personal example. Through your actions, send a positive message that complaints are properly handled with no retaliation against people who speak up. Given the importance of non-retaliation, select which of the following actions you should take.
So should we inform your staff that retaliation and bullying are prohibited and why?
Yes.
Following a report, monitor your team for signs of retaliation and bullying?
Yes.
Uh, responsibly handle reports of retaliation and bullying?
Yes.
Yes.
Let your staffers all concerned about bullying on their own?
No. No.
So the last one, talk about situations you're permitted to share when leadership prevented or addressed retaliation and bullying.
Yes.
Yes.
Permit it.
As with other managerial situations, it's better to be a positive role model and appropriately respond to situations than to sit back and let retaliation or bullying occur. Now, please carefully review the policy. When you are done, click the button to acknowledge that you have read and understand the policy.
I do have the policies that I can pull up. I was going to pull those up at the end of all the training videos, so we're not jumping back and forth. So I'll, I'll come back to the policies at, at the end here. But normally, when somebody's taking the training, the policy related to this subject would be attached to the training so they could review it and, uh, have access to it.
Now, let's review a summary of what you have learned in this course.
Uh, number one, the first one, as a manager, you may have responsibilities to foster a speak-up culture. Establish a workplace that values open communications and problem identification and resolution. Know how to receive someone's concern, to put them at ease, obtain all relevant information, and encourage them to raise future concerns. Demonstrate your ability to listen carefully to concerns and to communicate your interest in doing so. Inform someone who raises a concern that you will follow up and the steps you plan to take and then follow up. Communicate with your team that retaliation or bullying detected at anyone for raising a concern is not tolerated. Address others' concerns or raise any concerns of your own about possible retaliation or bullying. And, uh, in managing others, do not take, uh, any actions that may involve retaliation against someone for raising a concern or providing information in an investigation. Monitor your team for signs of bullying against someone who raised a concern or helped to resolve it. And be mindful that individuals who raise concerns may be sensitive to possible signs of retaliation or bullying, and reassure these individuals that speak up is the right action and address suspected retaliation or bullying. So this is the completion of the course. There is a quiz at the end, but Kathy, I'm going to ask you, we're, we're about an hour and five minutes in. You want me to go through the quiz or you want me to?
I, I think they got, I don't think they need to take the quiz. Thank you.
Yep.
I have to set this one.
This is the short one. This is the short one. I'm going to go ahead and skip this because this is kind of about employees and that sort of thing. This was another course, but I want to make just one comment, kind of based on my experience. I always think in the back of my head that if somebody has the courage and the bravery to speak up and report an issue, they're typically not doing it for their own benefit. Typically, they're not thinking that they're going to get a promotion or they're going to be in a better position within the organization. Normally, they're doing it to help the people that come up behind them. So I'm always trying to be, I always think about being empathetic and trying to process that, one, they're being very brave and courageous to come forward and speak up and report an issue. But also that they're more than likely doing it for the other people that might have other issues. If somebody's being harassed or whatever, they're not really doing it to fix their situation. They're doing it to help make a difference for the other people that might have other experiences related to that. So just wanted to kind of mention that. That's been my experience when I talk to people over the years.
Before you proceed, take a moment to review the features.
Who can we talk to about our boss and male coworkers' awful behavior? Or do we keep our mouth shut about this hostile work environment so we don't lose our jobs?
One manager is always telling me, "Go back to where you came from. You're not one of us." Do I have to be insulted to earn a living and provide for my family?
One night, Mr. Lee suggests we share a hotel room nearby instead of getting home late. He tells me that our company cannot afford two rooms, but I know what he really wants, and it's not about saving our company money.
The manager said she doesn't mind that our team is scared of her because fear is a great motivator. But do I and my coworkers have to be frightened while getting our work done?
Organizations seek to foster workplaces where all individuals are treated respectfully, can comfortably interact with coworkers, and perform to their best. Harassment and bullying undermine such an environment. Most harassment and bullying incidents go unreported. Those that are reported can be costly. Practically everywhere, harassment is against the law. Our organization will hold anyone who engages in harassment or bullying accountable. Workplace harassment and bullying can occur in four ways. These forms of harassment or bullying involve offensive, intimidating, or abusive conduct. Select each image to explore them. Verbal forms. These include making jokes, comments to someone else, or verbal sounds. Visual forms. These may include someone's actions like leering at someone else or displaying posters, drawings, and images in social media posts. Written forms. These can include emails, notes, text messages, graffiti, or other items in written form. Actions. This can include conduct such as gestures, physical contact with someone, and sexual advances. Negative effects come with ignoring workplace harassment and bullying. Select yes or no for whether each item involves a bad outcome due to this behavior.
So yes or no, absenteeism and employee resignations?
Yes.
Better teamwork thanks to constant pressure from coworkers?
No.
Decreased morale, which spreads to coworkers in other teams and departments?
Yes. Yes.
Time lost to investigations for managers and others?
Yes.
Lost productivity of both the targeted individual and coworkers?
Yes.
Many organizations are dedicated to a harassment-free and bullying-free workplace. Why? Benefits include: less stress and anxiety, a workplace culture of dignity and respect, more satisfied and productive staff, less absenteeism, reduced costs, and a better reputation for the organization. Organizations want to prohibit harassment and bullying. Many governments enforce laws protecting employees. Select each image to learn more. Organizations. Almost all organizations around the world recognize that harassment and bullying amount to improper conduct in the workplace that harm the organization's staff, culture, productivity, and its reputation. To foster a safe and respectful workplace, these organizations establish standards to prevent harassment and bullying. Laws worldwide. While laws may vary in certain locations regarding types of conduct, harassing and bullying conduct is never appropriate behavior in the workplace. Protected characteristics. As individuals work in different locations, personal characteristics protected by law may differ. Wherever you work, understand the standards that relate to coworkers, customers, business partners, and local communities. Regardless of specific legal standards, it is never appropriate to harass someone because of her and his personal characteristics. These may include such characteristics as gender, race, ethnicity, religious faith, disability, age, marital status, and others.
At first, my manager, Mr. Lee, is the ideal boss. He takes an interest in me and often comments on my intelligence and business skills. He includes me in meetings with important customers. Then, one night, Mr. Lee suggests we share a hotel room nearby instead of getting home late. He tells me that our company cannot afford two rooms. Besides, he said he could offer me some career advice too. But I know what he really wants, and it's not about saving our company money. Is Mr. Lee taking advantage of his power as my boss? The next day, I am in shock. Headaches, I feel dirty, like somehow I had encouraged Mr. Lee. I can't focus on my work, fall behind, and don't want to talk to anyone.
Quid pro quo is a Latin term which often translates as "this for that." Quid pro quo harassment typically involves a manager seeking a sexual relationship in exchange for providing a subordinate a job benefit. The manager relies on his or her authority to pressure the subordinate. This conduct is always improper, even if the subordinate is willing to make the exchange. A manager should never seek a romantic or sexual relationship with someone that manager supervises. Why is quid pro quo sexual harassment improper? Select the images to learn why. Improper benefits. The targeted individual may feel he or she has to go along with the manager's request as the only way to get a job benefit, such as a good assignment, raise, or promotion. Improper punishments. The targeted individual may feel he or she has to go along with the manager's request or that individual may even be denied job benefits that person has earned. Unfairness. Others may believe that the targeted individual gets a benefit that others who may be more qualified do not receive. Abuse of power. The manager uses his or her position for a personal benefit. By doing so, the manager is putting his or her interests above the organization's interests. For each statement, select whether it's likely or unlikely to indicate quid pro quo sexual harassment.
First one is the manager offers to pay for lunch for an employee. Likely or unlikely?
Yeah, unlikely.
Next one, an employee feels forced to have sex with a manager in exchange for a salary increase.
Duh, likely.
A manager and employee begin a sexual relationship shortly before the employee is promoted. Manager, yeah, I'm sorry. Shortly before the manager is, the employee is promoted.
Yeah, likely.
A manager compliments a subordinate on her clothing.
Yeah.
A manager asks her subordinate to work overtime in exchange for overtime pay.
Unlikely.
A manager uses an excuse to coerce her, his assistant, to spend the night with him to earn a higher salary.
Likely.
An executive recommends that one of his managers give a certain employee a raise who the executive has asked out on a date.
Yeah, likely.
My coworker Yolanda tells me that our male coworkers like to send her cartoons that are hurtful and offensive, like the ones that show women in sexually compromising situations. I've received a few of these cartoons myself. Yolanda told our boss about it, but he shrugged and suggested that she ignore them. Who can we talk to about our boss and male coworkers' awful behavior? Or do we keep our mouth shut about this hostile work environment so we don't lose our jobs?
A hostile work environment involves intimidating, offensive, or abusive conduct, targets an individual's personal characteristics, affects that individual's job performance, and involves behavior that others are likely to find as offensive. Remember, harassment comes in four forms: verbal conduct, written conduct, actions, and visual conduct. Know what personal characteristics are commonly protected from harassment. They include: race, color, and ethnicity; sex or gender, including sexually oriented harassment; religion; age; marital status; national origin; social class; and physical, emotional, or mental conditions. Drag the type of hostile work environment harassment on the right to its corresponding type of hostile work environment harassment on the left.
Okay, the first one is Joseph Reckley finds images of male strippers placed on his desk by some woman in the office. What type of harassment is that, do you think?
Sexual.
Sexual harassment or sex-based harassment?
I think it's more sex-based. Let me see.
No.
There you go.
Co-workers make fun of Robyn because they think she dresses like a man.
That's your sex-based, yeah.
A teammate repeatedly refers to husband's pet turban or duster as his handy bathtub.
Ethnic.
Religious.
Rel- all country religious.
Religious.
Yep.
Office mates laugh at Luigi whenever he wears an outfit he says reflects his native people's traditional dress.
Ethnic.
And office party colleagues ridicule Henry telling him he dances like a white guy.
Not long after coming to this country, I found work. I married a fellow immigrant and we had our first child. One manager is always telling me, "Go back to where you came from. You don't belong here. You're not one of us." A coworker sends me links to anti-immigrant websites, another jokes that everyone from my birth country is lazy and a criminal. Do I have to be insulted to earn a living and provide for my family?
Based on the last scenario, select what you think qualifies as hostile environment harassment. Then select Submit to view the correct and incorrect answers indicated on the right to see if you chose correctly.
So do you think this constitutes a hostile environment? Mateo is targeted because of his country of origin?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mateo is targeted because he's an immigrant?
Yes.
Mateo is targeted because he lacks a sense of humor?
No.
And Mateo is targeted because of his ethnicity?
Yes.
Yes.
As we will explore, others' actions toward Mateo likely qualify as hostile environment harassment because they engage in offensive conduct directed at one of Mateo's personal characteristics. While ethnicity is a personal characteristic, it is not mentioned in the scenario. For each example, select the option that fits its form of hostile work environment harassment.
So we're looking for the type of harassment. Is it verbal, written, physical, or visual? The first one is Audrey receives an email with a cartoon making fun of her ethnicity. Written? After heated meeting, George blocks Ari from leaving the room. Russia repeatedly jokes about Gabriel's sexual orientation in front of their coworkers.
Verbal.
And Rani repeatedly calls the woman in the office little girls. Marco makes fun of Chavir in a department email for taking days off for religious purposes.
Written.
You guys are good. Coworker said send Tam a series of altered photographs of her in a sexually seductive position.
My coworkers and I agree that one of our department's managers is a difficult boss. I watch her scream at individuals for making mistakes and telling new hires that they're lazy and stupid. My coworker Sunil says this manager slams books against others' desks. She claims it's to make sure they're paying attention. Sunil was brave enough to talk with his manager about the effects she's having. The manager said she doesn't mind that our team is scared of her because fear is a great motivator. But do I and my coworkers have to be frightened while getting our work done?
Workplace bullying, sometimes called mobbing, is abusive conduct. This behavior involves an abuse of power or authority that an individual holds over others, and intimidating or offensive conduct. Often bullying occurs as a pattern of offensive conduct, though in some cases, one instance may be considered as bullying. A manager who sternly holds an employee accountable is not bullying. Conduct becomes bullying when the behavior involves the factors mentioned earlier. For each statement, select whether it's likely or unlikely workplace bullying.
So likely or unlikely, for good reason, the manager disciplines an employee for poor performance by putting him on probation.
Unlikely.
An employee continuously threatens a coworker with physical force.
Likely.
An employee ganks off a coworker's head cover and throws it in the trash.
Likely.
And an employee continually pressures a coworker to do his work for him.
Likely.
Team member constantly berates her teammates for being stupid, lazy, and incompetent.
Likely.
Take practical steps to prevent workplace harassment and bullying. Treat others respectfully at all times. Know and comply with our organization's policy regarding harassment and bullying. Monitor your own conduct to ensure that others are not likely to perceive your behaviors as intimidating or offensive. And know how to discuss disrespectful behaviors with coworkers. Even if you are not the target of harassment or bullying, you have a responsibility to help address instances of improper conduct. Select each image from left to right to explore ways to properly respond in these situations. Don't be a bystander. When witnessing individuals harassing or bullying others, don't simply ignore the situation. Everyone has a duty to address questionable conduct at work. This helps to establish a workplace culture of personal accountability, civility, and respect. Get involved. If it is safe to intervene when someone is harassing or bullying others, consider taking any of these steps. Call out hurtful behavior in a respectful way. Let others know that their behavior is improper, but do not raise the tension of the situation. Stop the behavior by distracting the aggressor. Change the discussion topic or alert them to an approaching manager. Bring the targeted individual out of the situation. Assist others. Whether or not you are able to intervene as a bystander, if you know of someone who has been harassed or bullied, offer help to this individual, including providing assistance with making a complaint. Write down what you observed in case this information is needed to address a complaint. Raise concerns. Discuss harassment and bullying incidents you know about with your manager or another authority. Retaliation involves punishing someone for taking steps to stop, report, or provide information regarding workplace harassment or bullying. Select each panel to learn more. Examples of retaliation. Retaliation can involve either continued harassment or bullying of someone or taking steps that hurt that individual's employment because they oppose misconduct. Examples include: providing the individual with the fabricated unfair performance evaluation; transferring the individual to a less desirable position; and making the individual's work more difficult. Actions protected from retaliation. Our organization will not tolerate retaliation against anyone for raising a concern or making a complaint about harassment or bullying; providing information for or serving as a witness in an investigation; and raising concerns about suspected retaliation. Preventing retaliation. Everyone has a responsibility to help prevent and address suspected retaliation. This includes: read and understand our organization's policy regarding non-retaliation. If safe to do so, call out others' conduct against coworkers that may be retaliatory; and raise concerns about suspected retaliation with your manager or other resource. Now please carefully review our policy. When you are done, select Submit to acknowledge that you have read and understand the policy. Now, please review a summary of what you learned in this training.
Organizations seek to foster workplaces where all individuals are treated respectfully, can comfortably interact with coworkers, and perform to their best. Harassment and bullying undermine such an environment. Practically everywhere, harassment is against the law. Our organization will hold anyone who engages in harassment or bullying accountable for their conduct. Quid pro quo harassment typically involves a manager seeking sexual relationship in exchange for providing a subordinate a job benefit. Hostile work environment harassment involves intimidating, offensive, or abusive conduct, targets an individual's personal characteristics, affects an individual's job performance, and involves behavior that others are likely to find offensive. Workplace bullying, sometimes called mobbing, is abusive conduct and prohibited. Each of us has a duty to help prevent harassment or bullying and to check our own conduct towards others to ensure others do not find it offensive. Even if you are not the target of harassment or bullying, you have a responsibility to help address instances of improper conduct. Retaliation involves offensive conduct against someone who raises a concern about harassment or bullying or assists in the investigation of it. Retaliation will not be tolerated. And Kathy, I'm going to skip over that quiz because I know we're running up, probably get some time.
Thank you.
And you guys have done a great job participating. There's one last video I'm going to share with you. It's, uh, it doesn't revolve, involve any interaction. So it's short and sweet.
Have any questions to this presentation? Or a guest from Centrio?
I'm going to start. Jimin, Al, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
Ms. Preaka, Ms. Jordan?
Who, so, thank you for the train, it's a training, I assume this, what we just went through. Who is going to be receiving this?
I don't know that we've made that determination yet as to who would receive this specific training. That is the ongoing meeting that occurs after this meeting with me and staff as we set up what we would like to use. This is one option of what we can use. This was actually selected from Kathy because she feels it aligns with our lighthouse. Specifically because this organization also helped us with our lighthouse complaints. So I believe that, you know, there's an aspect of here that's targeted at managers. There's also an aspect of this that's targeted so that all employees could know some things. So I want to review the training and I have some questions for the organization that's presenting to us today regarding this training and how available it is. There's costs associated clearly with some of these things. But we will begin to plan in earnest to make sure that we are ready to roll this out as promised in the fall.
Okay, thank you, because that was going to be my next question. Is there a cost, what is the cost involved in this? And I'll, because of course we have not seen any of that yet, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think today primarily to present some training information on speak up, listen up to the board itself. And then we'll follow up, we'll start some conversations about for the staff and the different schools and that sort of thing. So we'll work on that, but I, we'll work with Kathy on content and all that. A lot of the courses that we have are ethics and compliance related, in fact, all of them aren't. But we have a thousand different courses that are available. So we need to kind of streamline, figure out what you want to focus on. Ideally, the training is there to support your code of conduct and your written policies. But it sounds like Kathy and the focus for, for you guys might be more on impacting the culture through a speak up and listen up campaign, which is a big priority for us. We have a content that's streamlined specifically on speak up, listen up, and that type of culture. Jason, you want to kind of chime in and talk about content or respond?
Yeah, so what you saw in one of the courses was there were two modules just on speak up. Why you should speak up and how you might speak up effectively. And then the third and fourth modules were really geared toward managers. Why it's important to listen up and how do you listen up? And the importance of, of the non-retaliatory workplace. So there's just some flexibility in terms of how you could roll some of these different pieces out.
And just to remind the board the genesis of this. The board did direct that you have training on all of these topics: whistleblower retaliation, harassment and bullying, and speak up, listen up. So this is the, the training that we're providing as requested by the board. So I know time is running, so we have some additional guests. So Craig and Jason, thank you so very much. I don't know if any other board members have any other questions before we wrap this portion up.
Ms. Morgan, do you have any?
No.
Okay, no, we can continue.
So thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to invite Attorney Scott Atwood and Attorney Melanie Hernandez of Henderson Franklin Starnes &amp; Holt. And they're going to share the specific whistleblower, public whistleblower statute with us as well as the, you can sit over, you want to go over there?
Well, there's a button.
Scott?
This one?
Yeah, there's a button.
I like this one, it makes me feel tall.
There's a button you can raise.
That'll happen all day.
Mr. Chairman?
A button?
Mr. Chairman, if we could have one minute so I can go and assist them, please?
Fine.
Thank you. And I don't know if any board members need a break as well, sir.
That's why I bring her, she's smarter. I see what you're saying, you're saying there's a button to the. I'll keep it down there, I'll feel.
Well, you guys continue with your, but thank you for your time and I appreciate your participation today.
Thank you.
Would you rather? Hmm? Yeah. The tougher crowd than the judges. All right. Hmm? Yeah. All right, so you're all ready to go? Okay. This is where we are now. Oh yeah, thank you. There is no clock in here, right? Okay, I need to use this up here.
Mr. Chairman, you want to reconvene?
Yes.
Please continue.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to go ahead and reintroduce Attorney Scott Atwood and Attorney Melanie Hernandez, both from the law firm Henderson Franklin Starnes &amp; Holt. And they're going to present to us the actual law that relates to what we saw earlier on Public Whistleblower Act and bullying and harassment. And I'm sure that Mr. Atwood would share a little bit more information on his background.
Sure. It was a pleasure to be here, everyone. Thank you for, thank you for having me here today. I've met many of you before, but those of you who don't know me, my name is Scott Atwood. I head up the employment practice at Henderson Franklin here in town. I have, I've acted, can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
No?
No.
You cannot, okay? Well, then I'll, I'll make it up higher, how about that? It only goes, this goes so high. How about that?
Better.
Better. There you go. All right.
Yes.
That's even better, right? Okay. Okay. Normally people tell me, "Turn it down," not turn it, not turn it up. So this is a welcome, a welcome departure there, so. What I was saying is I'm Scott Atwood, I run the, I head up the employment practice Henderson Franklin. I have the, the honor and pleasure of also being your attorney in several cases in employment matters, including a couple of whistleblower cases and some discrimination cases that have gone out. So I've represented you in these matters and, and I've also, so I have a little bit of perspective into the, the inner workings of the school district. But I've also been doing this for approximately 30 years. I started out in Atlanta. And, and I've come down, been down here for about 15 years. And so that's my background and I do pretty much exclusively labor, labor and employment for, for employment, employer's side. And this is one of the things I get the, the pleasure of doing is getting out and getting in front of stuff. I've often told people that it is much better for you to give me a 20-minute phone call and ask me for advice before things happen than asking, "How does it look on the back end after somebody's filed suit?" So I appreciate the opportunity to get in, in front of you to, to discuss these things with you. Now, I, I wanted to make sure I sat through the, the training that you had before that to see what was going to be going out to the employees and the, and the managers throughout the school district. And I appreciated being able to, being able to see that. I'm going to have a slightly different perspective there since it's the legal, it's the legal perspective. However, part of the consulting that I do as an, as an employment lawyer is not just looking at what's legal, but also what's best practices. So a lot of what you heard here, and I, and I encourage a speak up, listen up type of environment. In the old days, we called that an open door policy. It's a, it's a bit more robust than an open door policy. I think that's the best way to describe it is, and that it's expanding it out a little bit more. It's a little bit more interactive in the training that's, that goes into it with, with regard to managers. The one thing I will say about that though is, you know, well, what, there is a huge difference in what's legal and illegal and what is, what is considered to be, you know, good business practices and the, and the likes like that. As a, as an employment lawyer, when people bandy around the term retaliation, hostile work environment, discrimination, harassment, I'm always like asking them, "Are you asking me from my legal opinion whether or not they violated the law or if it was a best practice type of thing?" So a lot of what you are getting in here is best practices. And I certainly encourage that. And I, and I think that managers responding and dealing with, with issues in an appropriate manner and not being accusatory, those are all really great, great things. But then the next step is when, is when somebody says, "Well, we're going to be, get sued about that." And I oftentimes will say, "Well, no, you're not." I mean, well, yes, you may, but I'm good if we get sued with that because we're going to win on that because it's, it's, it's not a thing. It's not exactly, it's, it's not a quote unquote legal hostile work environment. It's not quote unquote retaliation because there are certain things that are required under the law in order to make it protected for retaliation. Certain things, certain things and standards that are, that need to be met in order for it to become legal, legally improper harassment. Now, when I say that, improper harassment, is any harassment any good? No. I would say that from a business culture standpoint, that is, that's the differential. So I'm talking here about the legal aspects because I know there are a lot of new board members, welcome. And I thought it might be great to have a primer a little bit on the, on the, on the legal aspect of it. So I'm not making any judgments as far as, you know, the lower threshold type of stuff, the good business practices that, that go into that. So with, with that in mind, I'm going to turn to, there's a Florida statute that, that is, that applies to public employees. And there are two, on whistleblowing. And there are actually two statutes, one's for private employees and one's for public employees. And the one for public employees is, shall I say, it's a little bit easier for a public employee to make a whistleblower claim than it is for a private employee to make a whistleblower claim. So the, the. So the standards that are used with that is that it... We changed the background from the original version here, so I still have the dark one. I looked up, I wasn't sure if I had the right page there going. So this is basically just saying it covers you. So, okay, it covers you. You are covered by the Florida Public Whistleblower Act. You are not a private employer, so the threshold is somewhat lower for you. So when they talk about certain protected disclosures, what are the protected disclosures? That's the next slide here. So what is a whistleblower? The statute goes through several circumstances where somebody may be protected as a whistleblower. Now, the person who would be protected would be the employee who makes the complaint to the appropriate authority. And now, it's supposed to be a written and signed complaint. And the first one is, the most typical one, is somebody who discloses something on their own volition via written or signed complaint. Second one is, somebody comes in, there's an investigation coming. This happens oftentimes when, let's say, you'll get an EOC investigation into discrimination. And they'll come in and they'll interview several people. And/or there's an OSHA investigation because somebody got hurt. They'll investigate several people. And that person says something that the boss doesn't really like. Like, "Why did you tell them that? You know, you shouldn't have told them that information." And then he banishes them to la belle. And so that's when those things will come into play, where they're participating in an investigation. Less common, I would say, for these sorts of situations. The first one's the most common one. Another one, someone who declined to take part in a prohibited adverse employment action. They tell you, "Hey, go break the law." You know, I have those cases a lot in private circumstances. Well, let's use the public experience here. So let's say one of your drivers, you've got an employee, a maintenance person, and they don't have a CDL license, which is basically saying too much because the CDL says "license" at the end. So they don't have a CDL. And they... And somebody says, "I need you to move that, you know, take that truck down the road." And they say, "No." And they said, "Well, you have to take it down the road." "Well, I don't have a CDL, I can't drive the truck. It's got to have a CDL to drive it." They refuse to do it, they get disciplined for that. That would be prohibiting... That would be somebody who refuses to take part in an adverse employment act, in an adverse prohibited or in a prohibited action. Okay? So... And then someone who files a written complaint with their supervisor, it's the same sort of thing as the first one essentially there. And then the last one is, if you didn't know before that you're participating in an investigation, if you file a complaint with the Commission on Human Relations, that's generally a discrimination or harassment claim. Or in the Inspector General, that's usually talking about ways to mismanagement. Those are protected activities as well. So... Or the whistleblower's hotline. Now, I know you do have a hotline here. There's always a question as to whether or not, since it's your hotline, not the state's hotline, whether or not that's actually covered as protected activity within that. I always kind of... I don't really want to be the guy who makes the law on that to lose on there. So I always say, if you've got it unprotected, the person calls the hotline, they're probably going to then follow it up. Somebody's going to follow up with that person. And they're going to end up getting a statement from him, which is going to then, if they didn't have it before, they got it now because they've now made it a protected thing because they're making a statement, they're putting it in writing. And so, you know, the nuts and bolts of that is, on a practical level, people who call the hotline, generally, they're going to end up getting protected because they're going to have a follow-up investigation or they're going to make a statement. So I would say absolutely, yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, please interrupt me at any time, act as if I'm at home.
Okay, thank you. If you can go back a slide, we're in kind of a weird role in the sense that we deal with employees and we also deal with members of the public, parents. So as I look at the last bullet, if we have a parent who files a complaint with the Florida Commission on Human Relations, for example, or more likely calls the whistleblower hotline and says, "My child was treated poorly at the school," are they considered whistleblowers if they sense that their child is being treated badly as a result of the complaint? Please and thank you.
Yeah, potentially. I mean, I mostly am going to get these in the context of an employee making these complaints. But conceivably, somebody could be protected from that as a third party. If an agency has a way to take... And you'll see when we get further in here, what kind of adverse action can you take against him? That's the real question. Can they show that even if conceivably they may be protected? What, you know, they may be a protected entity, did something that was prohibited happen to them? So the adverse action that would probably depend on... Would probably be the result there. Like if they said, "Well, as a result of that, this happened to me." It's possible that a claim could be made. I don't really deal with those a lot, so, you know, I'm more guessing on that than I am knowing for sure the coverage of that.
Thank you.
Yep, sure. I can find the answer for you. And I can certainly look into that because I know that's something, obviously, is concerning to the board. And you're in, obviously, a... This is for information. I'm, you know, I'm not... I'm providing you information as the board because at the end of the day, sometimes you have to look at employee complaints or lawsuits that come in. And when I'm coming and talking to you about them, it's nice to know that I've talked to you about, you know, what's the law? Because that's usually what I would do at the beginning of the case. If you weren't familiar with it before, we'd go through and I'd kind of talk to you about what the case is about. So I'm sort of preempting that a little bit about what the law is for these sorts of things when they come through the door. Because you have a lot of employees and you have a lot of things that get investigated. And some things warrant a, "Hey, we should be concerned about that." And some things warrant a little less of that. And, you know, so a little bit of knowledge of the actual law that's connected to it rather than, "Oh, that looks bad." You know, there are a lot of things that look bad that aren't necessarily, you know, you don't necessarily have liability for. Or it's... Because as I said, some things aren't actionable retaliation. Some things aren't actionable hostile work environments. They're just maybe bad business practices. And those are two, from my world, it's a very different discussion. So... So, is that okay for the response? Okay. So protected conduct under the Act is a disclosure of a violation or a suspected violation of state, local, or federal laws or any rules and that by an employee, which they have to say, "It creates a substantial risk of specific danger to the public's health, safety, and welfare." I would say that in general, that the courts don't pay a heck of a lot of attention to that portion that I quoted there at the end. If they're alleging a violation of the law, rule, or regulation, and it's in state and it's under the public whistleblower statute, that you're going to presumptively have some sort of protected conduct. If they're alleging a violation of a specific law, regulation, or... Now, by that, I do not mean a school board policy. I mean a law or regulation or a rule. Now, if there is a school board policy that's in place because it is implementing a state law or rule or regulation from the Board of Education, for instance, the one that Melanie's going to be talking to you about later on the bullying statute, then you have a policy in place, then it sort of can get connected to that, but it's not exactly the... They have to be complaining about a violation or a suspected violation. This is where you're different from private employers in that private employers, you have to show an actual violation of the law at the end of the day in order to win. Here, you're protected even if you just suspect it. So it's a much lower threshold. Blame your legislators for that, not every legislator, for this. It's been around for a long time. So for putting in that language, but basically, it's intended to lower the threshold for public employees, that you don't have to show an actual violation if they just suspect a violation of the law. Then they can still have protection under the statute. So... But the one that I think is really problematic for public employers in the school district is that one is pretty clear. When somebody says, "You're violating Title VII of the Civil Rights Act. You're violating OSHA." You know you've got a protection here. That one, I think, people see a little bit more. It's the second one, alleging gross misconduct because there's no magic word to refer to a specific thing in there as far as what they've done wrong and what's protected. So you see the language in here very long-winded because we lawyers like to write like long-winded things and lots of commas and things. But it's, you know, gross mismanagement, malfeasance, gross waste of public funds, suspected... Well, you can skip out the matter of career fraud. Or gross neglect of duty. Okay? So gross neglect of duty, gross waste of public funds, and gross mismanagement. Those are the ones that you see a lot of with public whistleblower claims because this is essentially where somebody's saying, "You're doing a bad job. You're violating our policies, you're wasting our money. You're forgetting to do this. You're badly doing this. You're poorly doing this." This comes frequently when somebody makes a complaint to somebody and says, "This person is wasting our money. They're doing a bad job." And... But where does it go from them just complaining? And they're just unhappy with the way it works and how the procedures are going to where the person is complaining about gross mismanagement? I can tell you that it is as clear... It is as clear as the mouth of the Kool-Aid Hatchie after a rainstorm. Okay? It is not clear what any of that is. It is very fact-specific and I dare say judge-specific as to whether or not gross mismanagement and the specific allegations that the person has made are violating the law or protected conduct. I've seen cases where, you know, the almost identical situation, where one judge says it's protected and another judge says it isn't. And so that makes it difficult for folks like me, other than to just say... When I look at it, I say, "Well, just be careful." You know, if you have a complaint that comes in there, you should... Even if it's not protected, you should be concerned that it might be protected. And you should raise the red flag to look at it and say, "This needs to be paid attention to." And somebody needs to... If somebody starts complaining to the appropriate manager. Now, and that's part of the complaint needs to be to the appropriate person. It can't just be, you know, two guys working on the work crew and they're complaining to each other about stuff that's not protected. It's got to be to somebody who can actually make a decision. In the school district here, the courts have found pretty consistently the way that you work is that it's a pretty decentralized HR environment, whereas each principal has a lot of control over the folks in their schools. If the complaint is made to the principal, that's generally been considered a sufficient complaint under the whistleblower statute to kick it in for coverage. Okay? So obviously, if they go up to a higher level, if they go up to the superintendent, then clearly that's going to be covered. Yes, you, it could be to you, but you're going to then give it to somebody, so it's going to get to that person, right? So that's the protection of how high up you're going to get. But coworker to coworker, it's not going to be covered there. So the complaint is made, it comes in. And I just always encourage when somebody gets one of these things where an employee is really complaining about the way that you're doing things, right? This often comes when somebody gets talked to. And it's a... Well, and their response is, "Well, blah, 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 blah." Right? A laundry list of excuses as to why they didn't do their job. But the, you know, and the pushback is, "It's because of all these bad things that you're doing." Right? I would respectfully disagree with the opinion of the predecessor presentation that most retaliation claims arise out of people looking out for the people down the road from them. The person... My experience in 30 years of litigation and consulting is that it primarily comes from... Not that, it primarily comes from me. Now, what is about me? And however, the statute takes that into account that when the thing I just talked about, where somebody responds back after they've gotten a disciplinary action, it may not be as protected. So there are limitations under the law as to when it's protected. However, as a good... Since we're talking good business practices here, good corporate practices. The good corporate practice is, when a complaint comes in, then that is within the scope of that gross mismanagement, the gross mismanagement, malfeasance, wasting money. I've seen some where they say, "Well, they didn't..." You know, "They inefficiently schedule stuff. They don't do this. They waste money here. They should have been doing this, they should have been doing that." And you can fill in the blanks because, you know, that's it. That these are the sorts of things that need to be really not brushed aside but paid attention to because it could potentially have you... Because it's often coming from an employee who is having some performance issues. And now, maybe it's not, but, you know, the jaded employment lawyer here says, "It's not 90-10 that it's not coming from an employee who's having performance issues." So it often isn't coming from out of left field, but it is... But for sure, for sure, there are many complaints that come that are protection from... Where either one, regardless of their motivation behind it, they're still protected activity. So I'm not sure, as I said, it's sort of an aside there, but I don't think it really matters because at the end of the day, if they make the protected action, then it's protected. And now, if it's... There may be some defenses, as I said, if it's after an adverse employment action occurs. So what would be the retaliatory act? You can't retaliate against somebody for engaging in this protected activity. The protected activity would be dismissing, disciplining, essentially, the whole kit and caboodle of disciplining somebody after they do something. So if I look at it as, if there's an adverse action that's taken against them that affects their terms and conditions of employment, it's a pretty low threshold. It's no longer just you have to be limited to demoting, disciplining, firing. Not a common allegation in school cases is non-renewals of first year, you know, or non-renewals of contracts. That's a common thing. So... But it can be less than that. What that threshold is, it's not completely clear. You know, is giving them the cold shoulder enough to be an adverse employment action? Is putting them in the broom closet enough to be an adverse employment action? Probably. The cold shoulder, hmm, maybe depends on how... Whether it affects their ability to get assignments. So that is the... That is essentially what you're prohibited from retaliating and taking these actions once they make this protected activity. And as I said, as we went through all of this, you're still... You're talking about a pretty high threshold here. Common complaints, common concerns. Most of the stuff that was discussed in the hour and a half preceding my presentation were things that probably wouldn't rise to the level of being covered under the whistleblower act. The bad business practices, to not deal with them appropriately, certainly. But from a legal standpoint, it's a higher threshold to get to a whistleblower claim. Okay? The next one is... The next one is confidentiality of reporting. That's sort of a mixed, mixed thing. It's like, I, I find it interesting that this, that the state talks about confidentiality of whistleblower and having a, and having an incredibly robust Sunshine Act in there. There are exclusions for things when they're included in there. But, you know, oftentimes, your whistleblower makes it public, and so then you're in a difficult position there. So I always just say, well, if you're investigating or investigating, just don't, don't respond back. It's just, you know, you're conducting an investigation, you're looking into it. So I tried to give a couple of examples here based on some cases. I didn't cite the cases, because that's boring. But I tried to give the, the examples of the factual scenarios that, that some, that have led to, you know, findings of protected conduct and stuff. Yeah, I had one case where lady was, the employee was complaining about missing Pell Grant money. Where'd the money go? I'm, I'm a, working in the accounting department, the money doesn't seem to be placed in the right place, and questioning that. And they said, kept saying, don't worry about that, don't worry about that. Well, you know, it's nothing to worry about. And so it, it happens in lots of places. So it's, where somebody's questioning, where did the money go? How did it get applied? That should raise the, you know, raise the concern that, that this might be something that's got whistleblower protection. And it's, I, I know, as you're thinking through it, the, because the analysis I get sometimes is, this is incredibly unfair if it's untrue, or if it's not, you know, honest, if it's not, if it's not fair. I get that, I understand, but the fact is, if they've made the, if they've made a protected disclosure, then the, they have protection. And, and unfortunately, for folks who are concerned about that, the, the threshold is suspected violations. And so the court then does, will do an examination of whether suspected was in good faith or not. And, and there is some investigation of that when you get into the courts. But, you know, I don't think that the initial response should be, well, this person complained because of this. And that is, that just tends to be the initial evidence of animus toward the complaint, instead of just taking it in, evaluating it, and determining whether or not there is a problem.
Scott, I just, Scott, if I can, I just want to put something on the record, that the chair has left the seat and has asked Ms. Jordan to take his spot until he returns. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
The, so let me get back into that. So that, that, that is the, so this complaint about the Pell Grants. Sorry, I lost my train of, train of thought. That's protected as well there. So a complaint about a failure to follow personnel policies, including discipline, which may constitute managerial dispute abuse, there's what I'm talking about. So this was a case where the person was complaining that we have a progressive discipline policy, we have this type of thing, we have this system in place, and you're, you're not paying attention to this. And one court said, well, that is a protected action under the whistleblower act. And I can tell you that there have been other courts who have said, hmm, that's, that's not, that's not really rising up to the level of talking about gross misconduct or managerial abuse, but, but it certainly is something, when that comes in, it should be paid attention to. So complaints about the Fair Labor Standards Act, that's wage and hour law, and sexual harassment, but once again, welcome back, Ms. Chairman. And, and you missed, you missed the managerial dispute part, it's really, it was really exciting. It's, it was probably the best part of the five, the five minutes was the best part. So they'll, they'll fill you in later. But the, so the Fair Labor Standards Act and the sexual harassment claims, I mean, those are, those are claims that are typical EEO types of complaints. Those are the types of things that I don't, I don't really worry about, you know, somebody not noticing this, because it's, it's the type of thing where, when you're making those, where there's always a procedure in place to, to deal with those. So, and which, which makes the fact that these folks are, be unable to make a whistleblower complaint anyway. Just note that in addition to the whistleblower statute, that the, the, all of the sexual harassment statutes under both the state and federal law have retaliation provisions, and the Fair Labor Standards Act also has retaliation provisions. So it's like the double whammy. And, and all of these folks have, have attorney's fees provisions mandatory if you win. So that's the big, that's the big sword that can be, that can be hung over, over you is that, now, you don't, you're not subject to the level of damages that private employers may get with punitives and, and the like, but it still costs, and it's still, the, the attorney's fees provision in the, in the statute creates a significantly increased level of liability for any of these cases because of that, you know, that fact that if you have an attorney who, you know, takes the case all the way, and you don't, you don't settle the case, and you, they take it all the way to a trial and win, it could be, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, particularly because they can get back wages, and they, and they can get reinstatement. That's rare nowadays to get, to do reinstatement, but it is, it's out there, and it's possible for, for them to get reinstatement at the end of, at the end of litigation. Typically, in a settlement, you don't get to that, all of those things, you don't get to a, the attorney's fees, but that's built in as part of the value of the, of these, the settlement. Talking about the reinstatement, this is, and this will be conduct that is, before we get to the not protected activity, talking about remedies. You are subject to a particular portion of the statute that your brethren in the municipalities have managed to avoid by getting a line there that says, this does not apply to municipalities. That is not you. You got a, you, you are subject to a section of the statute that allows for temporary reinstatement to people's jobs when they've been fired after making what they consider to be protected activity, and reinstatement if they file suit, that they can be reinstated into their job and be continuing to work for you while they are, while the litigation is ongoing. Now, many folks don't like that, and, and obviously, it's an uncomfortable position to have a, an alleged whistleblower, making a whistleblower retaliation claim back in your workplace while you're working there. Obviously, that is, the plaintiff's attorneys know that, and they, they, they play with that, that angle of it, to the extent that there is a protection on it. So it has that, that concern that when you have whistleblower claims, that they can potentially have the reinstatement in there, which I think is something to be considering anytime there is consideration of the value of a case and, and the like. We recently had one where that, that attempt was made, but you had a lucky slash good attorney who got that motion denied, and so that was a, but it doesn't happen. It, you know, it, it, it could have happened, it could have gone the other way conceivably, and so that's how these things work. There is a lot of that, that, there is that aspect of a remedy that is different from many other statutes, many other statutes. It's, it's basically the only one I can think of that, that allows as a matter of, by the law, rather than the judge, making an equitable decision, that, that permits or demands that they be reinstated, because it says they shall be reinstated in there. So it's, it's a, it has, it has some, it's some teeth and some things to be concerned about as you're, as you're dealing with whistleblower cases. So conduct that, that also, there was another one, that the police department was, was disorganized, their policies and procedures were outdated, discipline was imposed in an inconsistent manner. Once again, all complaints about the process and procedure, and how your manager, how the, how the, the, your policies are working, and how things are applied, and, and, but it's very fact-specific. So it just, it just depends on the, on the facts, because if you go to the next slide, there's a non, non-protected activity was found to be, you know, they were complaining about unprofessional behavior by a supervisor and not following policies and procedures, and denying them a vacation benefit, and, and, you know, all sorts of perceived slights that were not, that were not protected under the law. False emails, another one, that the supervisor allegedly distributed false emails about this person. Well, that may have not been nice, it may not have been protected activity under the statute, because once again, you have to be complaining about either a violation of the law, or you have to be complaining about this high-level gross mismanagement, gross misconduct, and many of the more lower-level things, I would say, would probably not meet that threshold. But it's something that has, keeps you, keeps you paying attention to it. Whenever these comes in, come in, it is, it really should be something that, you know, I would, I would say that the principals and HR and anybody who gets them in at a high level should be really paying attention to and, and not just disregarding them right away and dealing with those. So there, there are a number of situations where, you know, if you look at them factually and specifically, will they'll say, well, they're complaining about their own circumstances, they're complaining about not something that is, that, that is of high level gross mismanagement, they're, they're, they're inquiring about procedures, because you'll see sometimes where employees will, will have, you know, is this a violation of the law? And it's a question mark. And the courts, depending on which court it is, will say, well, that's not a complaint, that's an, that's an internal inquiry as to what the proper policies are. You know, it's, it's, you're going to look at them all very factually, and so, but the high level that I explained is, is what's going on there, and just paying attention to them as you're going along. Okay. So because you've had to listen to me, you get to, you get the enjoyment of listening to the rising star in our law firm here, this is Melanie Hernandez, and I'll be yesterday's potatoes pretty soon here. Melanie is, is a recent addition to our firm, we're really happy to have her. She graduated from Stetson Law recently. She was a superstar on the, their trial team, and she is a proud graduate of, I'm so sad, I'm so happy about it, proud graduate of FGCU, and one of those people that we talk about, who actually came over from the East Coast to, to go to, to go to college here. So she chose to be here, and we're happy to have her. So she has been working with me a lot on employment matters, and she's primarily in the employment department, she does some business litigation as well, but, so she's helped me with, with a couple of cases for you, and so I thought it was only appropriate that you should get to meet her and let her talk about bullying, which does not occur in her office, I hope.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Scott mentioned, my name is Melanie Hernandez. It's great to be here. I actually, you know, like Scott mentioned, went to FGCU, I was a poli sci major, graduated, and worked with Congressman Francis Rooney for two years, and then went to law school. So here I am now, really excited. All right. So today, we're going to be talking about the bullying and harassment statute passed Florida. There you go, perfect. So the bullying harassment statute is also known as the Jeffrey Johnston Stand Up For All Students Act. And basically, it says that it is required for all school districts to have a bullying and harassment statute provided for all the students. It, that applies not only to students, but also to staff and employees. Prohibiting bullying and harassment on students, school grounds, sponsored events, and through school, school computer networks, which is a big point, and we'll get more on that. So bullying, what does bullying mean? I mean, we all know what bullying means, but per the statute, teasing, social inclusion, threats, intimidation, stalking, an offensive environment, hostile environment, unreasonable interference with a student or staff and employees' performance, work, schoolwork, whatever. What does it look like? So one of the biggest things nowadays that we see the most nowadays, especially with social media and technology, is cyberbullying. So social media post is obviously the most common one, but when it comes to school districts and staff and employees specifically, that can come in the form of emails, texts, telephone calls, whatever, you know, through intimidation, threats. For example, I have here threatening emails, like, if you don't do this, you're going to get fired, if you don't do this, you're going to be demoted. Stuff like that would be considered bullying under the bullying statute. Now, what does harassment mean? So bullying and harassment are very correlated, but harassment focuses a little bit more on physical threats, or, you know, making somebody feel fear that they're going to, you know, be harmed, or interfering, again, with their educational, their employment matters. So one of the big things, please, thank you. So one of the big things about the bullying and harassment statute, that it also includes retaliation. Of course, we talked about retaliation a lot today, the previous presentations, Scott mentioned it, and this one too. So if somebody reports to you, taking adverse action, that is retaliation. Another big thing the statute talks about retaliation is if you make a report about bullying or harassment, and that report is not in good faith, that is considered retaliation under the statute. So if you're just doing it just to be spiteful, or cause even more commotion, or more bullying or harassment, that is considered retaliation under the statute. Also, the perpetuation of conduct is also under the statute, so if you're enabling the behavior, if you are inciting, inciting harassment, inciting violence, inciting any of that, it's also considered under the statute to be a violation. Next one, please. Awesome. So what does the school district have to do? So one of the main things is, they must adopt and review at least every few years a policy prohibiting bullying and harassment. Lee County does have this policy, and for the most part, it mirrors the Florida statute. It must be implemented by each school principal, so the main person, the main point of contact for this statute is the principals of every single school in this district. And it must be integrated in the school curriculum, it must be made available to parents, students, staff, employees, and it must have a bunch of procedures and investigations. So what must it include? So they're all required to include how, the procedures for reporting, the procedures for investigation, what are the consequences? Some of the consequences first, per the statute, and we don't have a slide for this, but per the statute, distribution of school funds that are provided to a school district by the state are contingent and payable to the school upon the school district following the statute, implementing it with the correct reporting procedures, the correct investigating procedures. So Lee, Lee County fails to follow this policy, per se, per the statute, they can be subject to withholding state funding to the school. So that's a big one. But the Lee County policy itself has the consequences of what would happen in bullying and harassment. Those include, you know, for staff, employees, termination, you know, a censure, or an official, an official disciplinary action. Some interesting stats that Scott and I found about this is, so just looking at 2018, 2019, just the last time that Florida made a report on this, there was 13,000 reports of bullying and harassment. And one thing that's really important to point out is that the bullying and harassment statute applies to everybody, regardless of your protected trait or class, kind of like Title VII, or Title IX applies, race, gender, sexual orientation, this applies to everybody. And out of the 13,000 reports that we had in those years, 10,000 of them were to people that are not, do not fall in any protected class. Of course, doesn't mean that, you know, if you are not in a protected class, you can't file under the other statutes, but one important thing to realize about this, this issue is that, oh, there you go. Out of all the incidents of bullying and harassment that happened in 2012 and 2019, out of all of those, nothing in the stats says that anybody was terminated. Most of the things were in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, censures, disciplinary actions. You're not allowed to use the word censure. actions. These are the consequences of this. One important thing to note is that even though there is no private cause of action for an individual under this statute, meaning someone can't go and file a lawsuit individually under this statute as a consequence, if you fall in a protected class, they can go and file the complaint under Title VII, Title IX. And I feel Scott's going to come up here and talk a little bit more about this aspect of it, but it's just really important to note that just because there's no private cause of action under the bullying and harassment statute doesn't mean that there isn't a private cause of action under another type of law. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Do you want me to just use this here? Yeah, sure. I told you she was efficient. So so to follow up on the on the issue there of the private cause of action, that is, this statute came about in 2008, and it was a result of a high school student who had committed suicide a few years before that. And it was it was basically the mother of that student really worked with the legislature to try to get something put forth and and actually into into this into the books. There was some sort of enforcement action, and that's where the Save Our Children, whatever that fund is, the I can't remember it off the top of my head there, but the state funding for schools, that it can be withheld if you don't follow the policy, if you don't implement a policy. If you didn't know already, you'll be happy to know, Policy 4.14 is compliant with with the with the statute. It's been in place, and so they have had you have a policy that that follows this and implements it. So and and those those statistics that go off to the the Department of Education, and they send a report to the to the governor, reporting compliance and and ideas, a lot of the things that they talk about with regard to the bullying statute and best practices and improvements that they've gotten from input that from the school districts when they when they ask for information is a lot of what you got in your presentations for the for the training, which is increased training, listening, communication. It's really shocking how much like just interpersonal communication can make a real huge difference with stuff. It's it's not, I would say, it's not rocket science, but it's not something that comes naturally to everybody. And and I would say that that is that's part of the reason that they have the training with these, particularly from the statistics show that 77% I just remembered that, can't remember, you know, how I got to work this morning, but I can remember that statistic. 77% of these complaints come from against middle managers, right? That was the last time that they reviewed it. And that's a real statement to me. It's it's the the person at the apex often is is trained and knows and understands these things, and they're 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 dealing with them when they come. The person that you're worried about is, and and you have this particular issue with with your principals here, is that, you know, they're they're on the ground, right? And so they're they've got a lot of things to do, and HR issues sometimes can be difficult. And so the the training and with this, with with increasing interpersonal relationships can be, that's that's my HR, my HR comment is my, not just the legal comment, but that would be my consulting commentary with regard to that, that you can never have enough teaching people to listen and respond and to not not jump off, you know, not immediately respond to to things that they don't know an answer to and to run it up the ladder if they don't have the answer and to have in an environment that where you can do that. So those statistics, I think, we we every time I look at those, I think that's that's pretty saying something. I don't know that, I mean, most of these are, and the statute was started as focusing on students. It does include employees, you know, staff in there. There is no cause of action that can be brought for that, so that I'm aware of. However, one third of those claims are for protected protected things. So even if the bullying statute doesn't quote unquote cover things, you have you have things like Title VII, which is the Civil Rights Act of 1964, as amended and amended. And then you have you have pretty much every statute out there for nondiscrimination. The Civil Rights Act, which includes race, sex, race, sex, religion, national national origin, you've got the Age Discrimination Act, you have the Americans Disabilities Act for disabilities. All of those include retaliation provisions and harassment and and include nonharassment provisions. So we were talking about the the level of harassment, and the questions were were asked. Some of you may have seen me kind of wince in a little bit because I'm like, that's not quite right, but it's a little oversimplifying. But it's it's good for people to be thinking that this isn't good behavior, this isn't great. But from a legal standpoint, I'll just, I know we're we're getting toward the end of the time, so I'll just narrow it down to this. It's in order to to have an actionable sexual or harassment claim under a protected, you have to have, A, it has to be for a protected thing, all right? So one of those protected characteristics, so the ones I mentioned, right? Age, sex, race, age, national origin, disability, a few other ones. And so it's got to be a protected characteristic under the law that that you have to be harassing them about. It has to be related to that, okay? And 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 it has to be severe, and it has to be pervasive. And the law has said has set thresholds pretty high for those. There may be a lot of lousy conduct and a lot of inappropriate conduct and a lot of conduct that doesn't that violates your own policies, but it may not be a violation of the law. It may not be sexual harassment. It may be inappropriate conduct. When they said likely showing that, there are things on there in and of themselves that could be used as evidence of it, but if they put on there every single day, the guy did this, and every single day, the lady did this, and every single, then, and and it was real, and the, I mean, the courts, the courts have found instances where there was no sexual harassment under the law, under the law, where a person exposed himself once, because they said, well, that's just a single incident. Like, well, how many times do you have to do that, right? But the the fact is, is that there are some, there are a number of decisions out there that are basically saying that the threshold is fairly high for these things. Does not mean that it's a good business practice to say, well, it's not a violation of the law, so we don't care about it. But it is different to say it's a violation of our policies as opposed to it's a violation of the law. And and I think that's a that's a substantive difference that lawyers look at and they say, well, that's not really retaliation. That's not really harassment. That's not really discrim, you know, usually discrimination kind of works its works its way in there. It usually is discrimination under the law when when things happen. But when people, you know, it the bullying statute tempers a little bit of this when I say these things for 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 schools, because, you know, some level, some harassment that doesn't rise to the level of of sexual harassment might might fall into the bullying thing. And so it may be a violation of your policy under the bullying, but that doesn't mean that it's you're going to have legal liability for it. It just means that the in order to comply with your statute, your policy, you need to you need to you need to follow the policy. So that's the that's sort of the summary of the harassment stuff without without spending three hours in examples and 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 the like. I think that's best saved for it's 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 good to do training. It's good to explain to people to be that this could be considered inappropriate and, you know, and constant kidding particularly. Like, we don't, we don't want them necessarily, employees to necessarily think, well, I could do it once and get away with it. I'm okay. It still can be a violation of your policy, even if ultimately you don't have legal liability. So I encourage you to to continue to enforce those. You have good policies in place, but just really expand the training that you would have on it, and I'm open to any questions.
Members, any question?
I had one on bullying, cyberbullying, student to student, that basically happens off campus and not using school, like Chromebooks or anything like that. But it's reported, you know, this student is to the principal or whatever. Where do what's our duties there?
Well, so it's a it's a student to student complaint, right? They're they're bullying them off there. So Melanie, I think, did you want to, did you want to address that?
I was just going to say, it's tricky because the statute technically says that off-campus activity is not covered under the statute, but you, I mean, I guess you never know when the students are doing it, if they're doing it while they're on campus, you know, their phones, I mean.
That's what the 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 trick is in the facts at the end of the day. Ostensibly, it's it wouldn't be if they're sitting at if they're sitting at home and doing it on Snapchat, going back and forth, putting it on to putting it on to there, it may not be covered under the bullying under the bullying statute. But, you know, almost always, if they're doing it in a in an extended sort of role, they're doing it in school at some point, they're doing it through the Chromebooks that you're given, where they've logged in and they used it for that. They're so at some point in time, you know, it's sort of like why, you know, all criminals don't 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 get away with stuff because they usually mess up somehow, right? And if they were good criminals, they wouldn't have gone to jail. They they the bullies usually do something that brings it into the school and under the stat under the coverage of it. So I guess you'd have to look at it a little bit, you know, there and there obviously there's some protection for them off off campus. You I'm sure you're you all became aware of the the Supreme Court case from from earlier where they had the the Snap Jack girl who was complaining about not getting out of the cheerleading team, and she was and she was saying F this, F that, F this with the school, and they they kicked her off of the off of the team, and she said it violated her First Amendment rights. And the Supreme Court was like, well, yeah, it's she it was a matter of public concern. She was complaining about the school right on the edge, I think, but but it was off-campus. So it was the the courts are going to be a little bit more restrictive in looking at off it strictly off-campus behavior. But my experience has been it rarely just stays off-campus.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just to add to what Attorney Atwood stated, these are things that we deal with on a daily basis, and it's very, very fact specific in case to case. When we're doing an analysis, we're looking at if there's any disruption that's flowing in back into the school, just as Mr. Atwood said. So and there are also some security things that happens because some of this may be happening on district equipment, which kind of opens up other doors for us. So I'll be more than happy to delve into that with each board member in a one-on-one to fully explain that. But there are other considerations that we look at when we deal with those types of issues.
Yeah, I think all the board members get this complaint often. Mr. Treka.
And I'm really glad you brought it up because it came up, I want to say, at every level of DAC when they reviewed the Student Code of Conduct, and I think that it was something that they wanted staff to address in the new Code of Conduct. So I'm hopeful that we'll have some kind of a recommendation and explanation as to why we do what we do so that those DAC members can then bring it back to their sacks and help those families understand.
Well, remember, it is very fact specific, but as I said, it's rare if you have an intense case of this for these kids to just be saying, I'm only doing it here, and I'm going to and and then there's the question of when the when the recipient is reading it, if they're in school, does that now bring it into school onto school, you know, premises? So remember, you've 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 got a lot of discretion under this statute. And and I did want to note there, in case you're wondering about our grammar skills there, it was the legislature that wrote threat rather than threats on the statute, so it wasn't our typo on the on there. We just repeated it verbatim. We did not have a typo because I looked at it at first, and I was like, that can't be. And then I looked at the statute, and I I should know better than to ever question her because she's always right. So so the the it 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 can be expansively reviewed, you know, with student things, depending on if you're if you've got questions about violence and and the like that are going into it. I mean, that's the intent of the the statute. When it was when it was kicked in in the early 2000s, we didn't have quite the the level of social media that that we have that we have now. The legislature hasn't changed or updated it because it's, I mean, quite frankly, it's broad. So it it doesn't, it hasn't exclusive, it hasn't explicitly stated for off-campus stuff, but one of the reasons is because there is some level of First Amendment protections that the that the Tinker decision way back when in the in the late 60s in the Supreme Court and First Amendment protections, and what are you allowed to say and what are you not allowed to say. I personally think that if you've got a bullying situation, it's not going to be protected under the First Amendment at any time. So but that's my that's my personal opinion here, and I'm not supposed to be relaying those, just relaying the law as much as possible.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Well, thank you for that presentation.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it, and thanks for allowing us to work with you. Thanks.
The next item on our agenda is the review of the April 11, 2023 regular agenda. Dr. Vaneer.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Great one-on-ones yesterday. Really appreciate all the board's time to go over some of the items. We did have some questions that were submitted, so I do want to make sure we take the time to speak to some other issues other than what we discussed in our one-on-ones. There was a question related to Human Resources, J2, on the consent agenda, the approval of the job descriptions for the Executive Services Division. These are two job descriptions we've been working on with the multimedia communications as well as the government relations position. The question was, when will these be advertised? As I've shared with you in the past, there is currently no plan to advertise those positions. We're simply building job descriptions. You'll see additional job descriptions coming your way regarding a chief of human resources and other things. We are trying to ensure that we have the best job descriptions, that when we do deem it necessary to go out and advertise, that we have these in our files and we're ready to go out and attract those best people. Remember, you were very responsive related to adjusting the government relations one, and we've talked specifically about that one potentially being maybe advertised after session, depending on who after session no longer wants to be in Tallahassee and maybe wants to come home for a more permanent job that doesn't require them to do 24 hours, seven days a week. So currently, there is no plan to advertise those. Do you want me to pause there, Chair, and see whether there are any questions?
Any questions on that? I'm sorry.
Okay, the next one was J5, the approval of the Computer Science Teacher Bonus Grant. Wow, we love the Department of Education because they do great things for us. And this is what schools, the question was what schools or what teachers will receive these bonuses. The bonuses are not based on individual schools. We can provide a list to the board when they are available. This is a specifically targeted grant from the Department of Education that allows for computer science teachers to receive a bonus allocation. The funding comes through the Department of Ed. The bonus given over the past few years and will continue as they're trying, the DOE is trying to focus on increasing the number of teachers who are able to teach computer science related to a course in our schools. The criteria for allocations are provided by the DOE. Teachers are that are teaching one of the DOE identified courses and have the certification in computer science can receive $1,000. If they are industry certification, they receive $500, but also are provided additional support and training in order to attain the computer science certification. We pay the bonus to the teachers once they we receive the money from Department of Education. I will add one more to this. Teachers are already working in cohorts one and two around the same type of performance bonus for civics teachers. So we're in the process now, the DOE has finally released that money, so we'll begin to start paying those individuals who have earned that civic certification and providing them the additional bonus. And again, this comes from the Department of Education, and we're a pass-through for that funding to our teachers seeking that additional certification.
Any questions on that?
The other one is, and I'm thankful, we may have to get some more information for all of you, but it was a question regarding the consent item for operations, L3, the approval to award the ITN N237442, D as in dog, B as in Bravo, for aluminum walkways, covers, and canvas. The question was, is this maintenance or is this hurricane damage? And if it's a hurricane, will this And if it's a hurricane, will this be FEMA reimbursed? There's really two categories within this. One is hurricane damage. The anticipated needs both include Ian-related repairs and normal day-to-day maintenance. So the estimated usage of this amount is a separation of about $225 in budgeted funds for hurricane Ian damages. Yes, if we dot our i's and cross our t's, we had a great meeting with FEMA today, and you are aware that we received our first $10 million reimbursement, yes, those would be available for hurricane reimbursement. However, there's ongoing day-to-day maintenance of our aluminum walkways, gutters, and other things, so that other $225,000 will be allocated for the day-to-day needs.
Any questions on that?
Okay, so the other one is another one from the Operations Agenda, approval for the expenditure for ITN, N is in Nancy, 227418, and I don't know all my letters in Bravos, L for Larry and A for Apple. Gutters, fascia, soffit, and roof replacement. The question was, in the board item, there's conversation or language related to maintenance being covered under our capital funding, but is this just capital or is this hurricane damage? Projects on this particular agenda item were planned roofing replacement projects prior to Hurricane Ian. So FEMA does not provide reimbursement for projects that were planned 12 months prior to the hurricane. So since it was already in planning phase, we do have to exercise our capital funding for that particular item. Those are the questions I received in advance. If there are any others, I'm happy to take them now, and we can either respond now or in a board update.
Board members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Next is the Good of the Order. Board members, do you have anything for the Good of the Order? Mrs. Giovinelli.
Thank you. I don't have a lot, I'm just going to make a couple comments from today. You know, we talk about students feeling safe and in a safe learning environment. I think that actually goes for employees as well, you know, and the productivity is the same. If they're in a safe work environment, there's a safe learning environment, the productivity will be the same. And I think I just said that, but I just thought it's important to reiterate that, how important it is to feel safe. Thank you, and that's it.
Ms. Fratika.
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Just want to say, today is Franklin Park Demolition Day, day one, Building F, I'm sorry, Building 7. So it went down, it started to come down today, it's going to be six weeks for that to take place, so that they have a mechanism to use those machines and turn them around. And I got the sledgehammer and I knocked out half a wall, just wanted to let you know. And then I actually got in a machine and took off half of a roof. So that was really exciting for me today, to see that that has taken place, and to see that we are finally moving forward with that. So I wanted to share that, and then, of course, we'll talk about our conference at another next week. Thank you.
So Ms. Jordan is a school wrecker.
Okay. [laughing]. I have just a few comments, and I don't want to, I know that you're still going to have a meeting, Mr. Superintendent, this afternoon, so not much on that, but regarding the, sorry, I'm going to pull up my notes, regarding what was expressed today through the Safe Schools, just a couple of things that I, I'm not sure, I think the question was already asked early about when and who was going to receive this training. I just wanted to reiterate that it's important that we don't put any more on teachers' plates. I know that you've heard that over and over again, but that it is important that our staff and teachers know that this is a listen-up, speak-up culture, and with that being said, hopefully that lingo will start to transpire through conversations and faculty meetings, you know, without adding more things on their agenda already. Regarding that training, I thought the training was good, well, I thought it was better than good. Some of the vocabulary might be a little hard to connect to education versus maybe corporate America, or what that I think was entailed to maybe be, so maybe some of the lingo could sort of change, or the vocabulary, so it could be more connecting. I'm kind of a glass-half-full kind of person, so when we talk about listen-up, speak-up, I think it's important that we not really focus on the negative connotation all the time, the no, no, do not, do not, do not, but maybe start to talk about, how can we provide a more positive experience? How are we going to get from where we are to where we're hoping to be with all of the faculty, top to, you know, starting from the top, starting with us, which is why I'm so grateful that we got to hear this first, because we have to set that example for the rest of the district. And with that being said, families are so incredibly important to myself, and I'm sure many members of this board, so when we talk about that listen-up, speak-up culture, it's not for me, it's not just for staff and administration, but it's also for our families and our student body, that we provide an environment in all of our schools that families can also speak up and listen up, and no retaliation or bullying from staff kind of transpire into families. So those are just some things I wanted to throw out there with you having an afternoon meeting, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
And I have nothing, thank you.
I just want to say, I thought it was a good presentation. Also, I would like to see added to the speak-up is good ideas. This is pretty much was complaints-based, and there's a lot of times in a system this large that the employees have excellent ideas, and we want to encourage them also to speak up about those, and for the managers also to listen up. So other than that, I thought it was fantastic. And Dr. Banier, do you have anything further to say?
Just would like to address a couple of the comments to say thank you very much. One of our goals in this committee meeting that we're currently have is, we're trying to reduce the 410 minutes that people spend online going through the training. We also understand through our attorney that there is a shorter version of this listen-up, speak-up, so we want to take a look at that. I agree with you with some of the language, and I do love the suggestion of Mr. Chair, that we also talk about, it's not just listen-up, speak-up when somebody's doing something wrong, it's an opportunity to have people provide suggestions. I will also suggest that as I have, since we've driven this as an organizational goal, as I've gone out and met with principals and teachers and Spalk employees, and I'm starting to use these words with them, and again, it's showing the executive leadership. But I point to the attorneys who left us, thank them very much for their presentation, as well as the company. We are really looking at, he said something very poignant before he left, that there's been immense amount of training and experience at my level, the executive level, and with your most direct employees. Our critical component is several layers down in the organization where people interact with each other, and I always use this example, when we find a gentleman or a lady who's really great plumber, or a really great gardener, and we promote them to then manage a team, we have to ensure that we're providing them with the additional direction as to how to lead, how to deal with conflict. But this is a great start for us, and I think there's one level that goes out to managers, and then something also that promotes that culture in our teachers and our other staff, so that they understand they're welcome to and being asked to step up, speak up, and our managers are being trained to listen up. So, I mean, there's two very different training models here, but again, it's all being, trying to be combined in reducing the 410 minutes of what's currently required of all of our staff. And we've appreciated not only the professional development team, but legal in helping us to realize what's policy, and what do we have to, policy or law, and what do we have to cover, and making sure our trainings haven't expanded past the scope of what's actually required. So that will make room for this one, and hopefully, Ms. Fleming, we won't have a situation where teachers feel like there's 430 minutes of training, and we won't be in that situation. So we'll keep you apprised.
Okay, I want to also thank Attorney Bruno and the legal team for putting this together. Did you by chance have any closing comments?
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, is thank you for the feedback, it's very much appreciated. And we definitely agree that having the positive speak-up as well, and the positive contributions is very, very helpful. So we appreciate that, this is just the first step in us moving forward to that cultural change that the board has directed the superintendent and I to move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, seeing no other business to come for this body, seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned, the time is 2:56.